Good evening. I'd like to call the August 8, 2023 council meeting to order. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Ms. Matt?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Thank you. All right. Very quickly, the mayor had a little bit of medical work done this morning and is not quite up to par. So she asked me to sit in. And so fasten your seat belts and let's head out. All right, if everybody would please rise and join me in prayer and pledge allegiance. Our most gracious heavenly father, we ask you to please look over this board tonight as we make decisions for this city and that they would be pleasing for the inhabitants and also in your eyes. We ask that you please look over the families that were affected this past evening by storms, by loss of power and any damage and that you help them to get through it and get back right again. All these things we ask in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. If you may notice, number one, we can't see it, but we're on TV. And it is at 5:30. And this is an hour earlier than we are usually on TV. At our last meeting and at our retreat this summer, we talked about the advantages of incorporating our work session and our city council meeting all into one. And this has been voted on and this is our first attempt at doing so. I want to go over a few things. First, as we progress through the meeting, as I've said, you're going to notice some changes. I no longer have the scheduled work session at 5:30, but our regular council meeting will start at 5:30. New order of business will be as follows. We will open the meeting with a call to order, the roll call, prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Then we will recognize anyone who has signed up for public comments to discuss items that are on the agenda or pertinent to the governing of the city of Milledgeville. If no one has signed up to speak, then we will go through the adoption of the minutes. There'll be an opportunity for the chair to speak with comments. Next time is set aside for presentations of awards, proclamations, so on and so forth, like we've always done. City manager will have an opportunity at that point in time, which usually that came during our work session, that he will have his moment in the shining star over there to be able to have his comments. Then we'll move to old business and address anything that comes up that has come up in an earlier date. Next, we'll move to new business. And this will give us the chance to address anything, consideration of resolutions and first reading of ordinances, so on and so forth. And then at the end, we will still always have our opportunity if we have to go into closed session. And then we will adjourn. So having said all that, what I'm going to do first is to ask the clerk if there has been anyone that has signed up for comment.
No, sir, no one's signed up tonight.
And so we're going to skip right on past that and move right on into our regular business. Everybody has received a copy of the July 25, 2023 minutes. Are there any changes that need to be made? If not, I'd ask for a motion to adopt.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in a second. I ask clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Matt?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay. The minutes are approved. We have one presentation tonight, and that is a proclamation recognizing Stevenson-Johnson Syndrome Awareness Month. Don't know that we have any participants that are here for that. Don't see anybody, so I'm not going to go out to the thing. But I'm going to ask the clerk to please read the proclamation.
The proclamation, office of the mayor of the city of Milledgeville, Georgia, where Stevenson-Johnson Syndrome and its more extreme form known as toxic epidural necrosis are rare but severest orders characterized by an extreme and potentially fatal adverse reaction to medications. And whereas almost any prescription for over the counter medication can cause this dangerous reaction that inflicts great pain and damage by causing severe blistering and peeling of the skin of mucous membranes, cold and flu-like symptoms, a sore mouth and throat, high fever, viral infections, and by creating a multitude of blood, skin, lung, heart and ocular ailments. And whereas treatment can require weeks or months of specialized treatment in the hospital. And whereas awareness and early detection are two important tools in the diagnosis, treatment and management of these painful and destructive diseases. And whereas proper and fitting to bring awareness to the medical condition known as Steven-Johnson Syndrome and toxic epidural necrosis and to the arduous journey of recovery it opposes on those unfortunate enough to be stricken by this malicious disease. Now therefore, I, Mary Parham Kokeland, as mayor of the city of Milledgeville, do hereby proclaim the month of August 2023 as Stevens-Johnson Syndrome Awareness Month. In the city of Milledgeville, bring awareness to this painful and potentially deadly disease and the importance of early detection and treatment.
Okay. Thank you, Bo. Okay, I'll recognize the city manager for his report.
I just want to make a note that for all of you to notice, I did turn the time clock off before I started. So none of y'all would hit the start button.
Who realizes it's calling now?
We, Mr. Chambers, mentioned that we were on TV an hour earlier than normal. We also are on another delivery system. Georgia College has purchased an app, Cable Net, is that right, Chris? Cablecast. And they are using it to stream Georgia College TV, which is where our meetings are shown, both being streamed live as well as periodically throughout the time between meetings. What this is going to enable folks to do is those people who may not have Spectrum cable will be able to put this app on their mobile devices or smart TVs or whatever and have the opportunity to see our city council meetings where maybe in the past they have not had that opportunity, except maybe through YouTube or somewhere like that. So we're excited about that. We're going to get some more information together about that and get that out to our citizens so that they can know to be able to go there and see the meeting streamed live, which was part of the purpose for changing the format for the meetings. I just want to go over the ordinances and resolutions that you all have in your packet tonight and then share just a couple of other things related to the city. First of all, there's ordinance 2308-10. When we looked at the budget during all of that time that we looked at the budget, one of the things that we saw in the library budget was we were a little bit confused and it appeared that, based on the way their spreadsheet looked, that they had put some of the information for the Lake Sinclair Library in their budget request for the city. I had the opportunity to meet with Jennifer, the regional director, a couple, three weeks ago. And she and I hashed that out. We got the spreadsheets to show what we needed them to show and she sent them back to me. In their request, if you remember, they requested either a 12% or 15%, excuse me, go into $12 per hour or $15 per hour minimum salary for their full-time employees. I shared with her when we met that while I certainly worked for mayor and council and would do whatever you all asked me to, I thought it might be a little bit of a bite this year for us to do the $15 per hour for them, but I thought we might could consider the $12 per hour. And that's the information that you have in your packet tonight and that I actually sent you towards the end of last week. That's what the budget amendment is all about, is go into $12 per hour for their employees. As I mentioned, in the information and in the packet that you have in front of you, that will increase the city's portion of their budget by a little over $31,000. It will increase the county's portion of what they contribute to for the $12 per hour to $46,942.21. And that would be required by the county based on the service delivery agreement that the funding for the library is based on. So that is the information that you have before you. I did not include the $15 per hour spreadsheet, but I certainly can share those figures with you. As I mentioned, in the information that I shared with you last week, that would come about with a price tag of a little over $59,000 for the city of Milledgeville's portion. I made the statement that most of that $31,000 was in personnel and that is in fact the case. But they did have a very small, about $2,100 request for inflationary coverage for their supplies that we fund them. And as you can see on the spreadsheets, these are only for the Mary Vincent Library and the Hancock branch. They do not include the Lake Sinclair branch that, based on the service delivery agreement, the county funds 100% of. So that is on your agenda tonight. It is an ordinance which will require two readings. My preference would be that we have a first reading tonight and then pass it in two weeks just simply because it is a budget issue. That's the way I particularly like to do budget issues. But I'll certainly follow your guide and your pleasure on that. Any questions? Anybody have any questions about that particular ordinance before I move on? Okay. The second thing in your packet is Resolution R. 2308-27. This is to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Skyline Construction Services to replace the roof of the Life Enrichment Center. We actually had three quotes for this roofing project. Skyline Roofing came in in the middle, but Mr. Thomas recommended that we take that quote because their proposal meets the required energy efficiency code and they have TPO certified. They are a TPO certified contractor where the other two companies would bring in a subcontractor in order to do that. So I think that's probably the best thing to do. The other thing that I liked about their quote, as you can see in your packet, is for not much more money, just $3,250, we will have a 20-year warranty on that roof. And that's huge for that flat roof and the types of materials that will go up there. Ms. Shinholster and I, we have gone back and forth with these folks about getting this roof repaired. We need to get it done. They are excited that it's finally coming before y'all. And when I say Ms. Shinholster, they contacted her because I think, Ms. Shinholster, straighten me out if I'm wrong, but I think you were driving force on the CDBG piece that brought that center.
I wrote the grant and then because it's in my district as well.
Yeah, but they are helping some of the least fortunate citizens in our community. And they are going to bear the cost of any interior repairs that need to be done based on the leaks. But I'm excited to get this one before you and get you to approve it so we can send it forward. We will be doing that with 2012 SPOSS funds that are remaining that we have to spend.
I think you skipped one, 2308-11.
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm not following my agenda, I'm following my packet, excuse me. Oh yeah, that's the ordinance for the special election. Thank you, Ms. Walden. I just carried on, I cut the clock off so y'all could time me, but y'all still need to keep me straight. That is an ordinance to call for the election for District 4 Board of Trustees for Georgia Military College. We would like to have that passed tonight so that we can do the advertisements that we need to do and meet those deadlines so that we can include this election as part of the T-SPOSS election, which minimizes the cost to the city since the county will already be holding an election at that point in time. Obviously, only city residents will vote in that. But Bo has done yeoman's work to get all this information together. You know, you got one set of rules for a regular election and another set of rules for a special election and then another set of rules because it's a board of trustees as opposed to an elected official. So it's just, I finally left him up here on Friday. I asked him three times if it was anything I could help him do and he said no. And I said, okay, I'll get my hair and let you figure these dates out. He has done yeoman's work on that and I appreciate that. And that will be coming before you. I would, since it is time sensitive, I would ask if possible to suspend the rules to vote on that one tonight, to approve it. Bo, we need to run an ad on the 12th and the 19th, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we'll need to be able to run that ad for the first time this Saturday on the 12th. Thank you, Ms. Walden, for keeping me straight.
You're welcome.
Resolution 2308-28 is the agreement for our permit application for the new traffic light that's going in front of Milledgeville Mall. I think most of you all were at the meeting that was held at Ruby Tewsies back in June. And we included a diagram of how that's going to look based on GDOT's planning. And GDOT has not requested any funding from the city for this light and I don't believe they will. But as all traffic lights are in the city limits of Milledgeville, we pay the pile on them. So for that reason, we sign off on the application and agree to do that. But so that will come before you for us to be able to send that on to GDOT and they can get to work on that. 2308-29 is the one that we pulled, one from turnip seed. It's the last meeting. This is the correct one. As I've shared with you, when you look at the 6.6% of the cost of the contract for the engineering and also preparing bid packets, evaluating bids, being part of the construction phase of the project, that will, the engineering part will be a little over $47,000. We have really no idea what the bottom line figure is going to be. Their estimate that was included in this contract is $718,000. But if you remember, when we were having the meetings about our water issues in April, this was one of the areas that I mentioned we would be looking at very quickly. And I'm hoping that with this proposal or estimated contract cost, we will be applying for two different grants, one through Senator Warnock's office, one through Senator Ossoff's office in order to get this done. And while not hoping we'll apply for the grants, we will apply for the grants and I'm hoping the grants will fund them. We're still working with Senator Warnock's office on the congressionally directed spending request for the belt press. As I've shared with you, we've made the first cut on that, but the entire Congress has to vote on it now. And as we all know, they're not in any hurry to do anything. And but hopefully, hopefully that will come to fruition as well. When Senator Ossoff was in town a couple of weeks ago, I just spoke to him very briefly and told him to be on the lookout for some water and sewer requests from Milledgeville. And he said that he would be. But... Some additional items that are not information that's in your packet that I just want to share with you as part of my report. Speaking of water and sewer infrastructure, we issued a bid request on July 11 for replacement of the water line on Montgomery Street that I mentioned as we were having our water meetings back in April was our first priority. The bid called for the installation of approximately 500 linear feet of two-inch water line and all of the attachments associated with that. Also, replacement of 450 feet of sidewalk, abandonment of an additional line. But basically, this would be a new line from Clark Street to Jackson Street going down Montgomery. If you remember, last summer, we had an issue with that line and we actually had to put some people up in hotels because of it. We issued that bid request on July 11 and we got no bids, which is kind of not unusual this day and time, unfortunately. So we will be working with engineering firm to see if we can beat the bushes, to find some folks that may be interested in doing that work. But one of the things that came out of our water meetings was that you all and the public wanted to continue to be kept abreast of what was going on with our water issues. So in my report tonight, I'm telling you that the first project we plan to do, we have yet to get any bids for. We've done the engineering work on it, but we have no bids and we will continue to work through that process to try to find some folks to do that work. Additionally, on July 11, we issued a bid request for stormwater projects on Woodview Circle, Leo Court, Sinclair Dam Road, Stone Ridge Drive, Allison Drive, River Ridge Road, Thomas Street and West Montgomery Street. Pretty much all of the projects that we're planning to pay for for stormwater with ARPA. And we thought we could group all of those projects together and have some luck with getting some bids, possibly from some quality contractors. Once again, we got no bids. So we will be working with that engineering firm to see if we can beat the bushes and get some bids on that. Bids had settled out for a little while, but they seem to be causing issues again. And I think this is purely just a labor situation. I don't think it's supply chain anymore. Having a little bit of problem getting some corrugated pipe. For the most part, everything else seems to be fairly easy to get. I mean, used to, you know, we could get water meters in 30 days. It takes about 90 days to get water meters now, but that's obviously much better than it was. But it's very frustrating to spend the money on this engineering work and then send these bids out and not get any responses. But we're going to continue to try because these are all projects that need to be done. And I will shoot you all an email with those project locations just so if any of them are in your districts and you need to talk to your constituents about them, you will know what's going on with them.
Since we're on the subject of water, I want to ask you, my district, I don't know about anybody else's, but they got two water bills. And I did and my neighbors. And people have called me and one lady said, do I have to pay?
Absolutely not.
The answer is yes. There were some of us that did not get any bills.
You didn't get one?
No.
Well, I didn't mean to say that.
I got to.
They don't collect it whether you get it or not.
What happened, and we had a little conversation about why this wasn't communicated to me when it happened so that I could communicate it to y'all. But in the process of running the bills, the sealing machine kind of ate up some of them. And they really couldn't identify what got ate up and what didn't. Boy, that's terrible grammar, wasn't it? So they just chose to, at least for those routes that they thought were eaten up, they went ahead and sent out an additional bill. I really personally want to look at the possibility of us going back to a water bill that is stuffed in an envelope for a couple of reasons. One, that sealer seems to cause us issues quite often. Number two, I think that's just a really good place for us to communicate with our citizens, just to stick something else in that envelope with that bill. So we'll be looking at the possibilities of trying to do that. But I apologize for not letting you all know that when it happened because I didn't know it until somebody called me about it last week. But I did not get two, so evidently my route was not eaten by the sealing machine.
I'm concerned about Mr. John.
I'm just not going to respond to that. Mr. Chambers?
I played paint, I played water for about 40 something years.
Mr. Chambers mentioned in his prayer about the folks that were affected by the storms. Just to give you a quick synopsis, Public Works was called out at 2:30 this morning due to fallen trees. Trees were reported down on North Jefferson Street, Cedarwood and Stone Meadow. Georgia Power released Cedarwood, the Cedarwood site, to Public Works at 12 noon. Keep in mind, we can't do anything until power is taken care of. And Public Works removed two trees from North Jefferson that did not deal with any power issues. And then at the same time, they removed one tree from Cedarwood and one from Stone Meadow. And here's the amazing thing. Even though Cedarwood was not released to Public Works before 12 noon, they got in and did what they needed to do in order to be able to get traffic moving and traffic was able to traverse all of those streets by 6:00 a.m. So that's good work on the part of our Public Works.
That was a huge treat.
Some of you may have had calls, I know I have, or you may have noticed like I do, some of our limb piles in the right of way are getting a little bit brown, which means they've been there a while. We have had some vehicle issues. You all know that a number of vehicles dealing with Public Works and utility maintenance had not been replaced in many, many, many years. And we did some of that last year, we are doing some of it this year. But the limb truck for the north side, it had some issues, but it is now back in operation. We have had both knuckle boom trucks out of service at one time. One has a blown engine and we're not going to replace that, I'll tell you about that in a minute. The other one is having the seals repaired and rebuilt on the knuckle boom itself. We think that one will be back next week. But these guys are working. You know, obviously, there are a lot of piles out there that don't require the knuckle boom truck, but they do require personnel and we're about three people short in that department right now. And have job ads out there and are waiting for folks to come in and apply, but that has not happened. It's really interesting, you know, we didn't have much of a labor issue at all during the... during the height of COVID, and now that COVID is on now, we're all of a sudden having a labor issue. That's making sense to me, but not much in the last three years has made sense to me. But the knuckle boom truck that has the blown engine, it was purchased used in, according to what Tim shares with me, it was purchased used in 2015. A new engine will cost $70,000. No need to spend $70,000 on an old truck. So with shaking hands, I approved the purchase requisition for a new one today, and we anticipate it will be in, in the next three to four weeks. $190,000. So Tim shares with me that he believes that they will be caught up with what's currently on the right of way and the current storm debris, the storm debris from yet last night, provided there's no additional ones and, and, you know, weather doesn't go crazy with us as it can during the summer. But they think they will be caught up within two to three weeks. So we're going to, we're going to put, put a notice out to our citizens and get it on our social media site so they know what's going on. Now you all know what's going on. And it's, I know it's been frustrating for folks. It's been frustrating for me. It's been frustrating for Tim. But they, those guys have worked hard to, to get up what they can, and, and they will continue to, to do that. Even, even coming in on Saturday, once they get all their trucks together, they'll come in on Saturday and, and work through it. So that's what's going on with the limb situation and what, what the information on the storm last night. I, I believe that if I, if I understood what was communicated to me last week correctly, we need to have a called work session a week from tonight, which would be the 15th at 5:30 for continuing on the evaluation of the city manager. Is that correct? Okay, so Bo, we'll set that up and get that out tomorrow. Same as, as last week, called work session to immediately go into closed session for a personnel issue. Let me call to your attention, if you haven't already noticed it, the Business Through the Years magazine that was in your box when you got here and call your attention specifically to page five, which is the City of Milledgeville story and ad. I spent about 10 minutes on the phone with somebody by the name of Leah Bethay. And between that and her own research, she wrote what I thought was an excellent little history of the city and city council and city government there. So please take a look at that and read it. And of course, you see the ad that we ran in the bottom portion of that, of that page with all of our fearless leaders out there in, in, in the photo. So please take a look at that. That's yours to keep. Tiffany Dixon from the inner quarter brought them over to me today when I requested them so that I could share them with, with y'all. And lastly, just want to remind you, or maybe tell you for the first time, that the move-in day for Georgia College students at the west campus is August 16th. Move-in day for the central campus for those students is Thursday, August 17th. Thursday, August 17th, as you all know, South Columbia Street, West Hancock Street, West Green Street, all of those areas will be extremely busy. But, and in case you have not heard, I think you have, but in case you have not heard, they will be, we will, we will have almost 2,000 new little children in town that will be freshmen. I had a very good meeting with President Cox the other day, asked her how they were taking about 300 more freshmen than they typically take if they were not a growth institution. And she said that they had some, some residence hall space opened up because of something that the Greek or the, the sororities were doing that they were no longer doing. And this was the last year for their SAT ACT waiver, and they chose to try to up those number of freshmen in order to possibly deal with any issues with enrollment in years to come because Chancellor Perdue has announced that all university system schools in the state of Georgia, with the exception of University of Georgia, Georgia Tech, and Georgia College and State University, will continue the SAT ACT waiver, but those three schools will be required to have their students take the SAT or ACT. About, about 80% of the colleges and universities in the United States have done away with SAT or ACT. And I think they, I think there's some hope that that may happen with these three selective institutions that are part of the university system, but that's the reason they were able to accept about 300 more freshmen than they typically would accept. So we look forward to, to having those folks in town. Some of you may remember Axel Hawkins, the student government vice president who came to a council meeting back in, I think, June. I, I reached out to Axel after that. She and Connor Hilli, who was the student government president, came to see me. I shared with them an, an idea that I had, that I had five years ago and couldn't get any traction on, and that is coming up with some type of program that students will go through during their freshman year experience where they learn to be good part-time citizens of the community where they're going to college. They were all over it, so the three of us are working on that now, hopefully to be, be able to pilot that in January with the new students that come in and roll it out full-blown next fall for freshman year experience. So I, I will just simply say that Kathy Cox has been a breath of fresh air to Georgia College and State University. She is always willing to, to meet with me, and she is excited about this new program that we're, that we're looking to, to get started. So hopefully, we will be able to, to be able to roll that out full bore next fall. But I'll take any questions that anybody has.
All about covered it.
I promise it won't, well, I'm not going to promise it.
Don't promise anything.
Don't need me to go against my promises and not leak.
Okay. There's no old business tonight, so we're going to move on to new business, and I'm going to ask the clerk to read ordinance O-2308-10.
Ordinance to amend the 2023, 2024 fiscal year annual operating budget to include a donation to the Mary Vincent Memorial Library.
Okay, this is the first reading of this ordinance, and it will come back up for our next meeting, August 22nd. I'll ask the clerk to read ordinance O-2308-11 by caption.
An ordinance for the purpose of calling a special election for the Office of Georgia Military College Board of Trustees, District Four, Milledgeville, Georgia, to fill the unexpired term of conveyance, to set qualifying dates and fees, and for other purposes.
Okay, the adoption of this ordinance is of the utmost importance and is time-sensitive if we want to hold an election to fill the vacated District Four seat on the Georgia Military College Board of Trustees, and to hold it in conjunction with the county-wide transportation special purpose local option sales tax referendum in November. You have heard the ordinance and the need to adopt it tonight. Is there a motion to suspend the rules and adopt this ordinance with one reading?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Ms. Mount?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, the rules are suspended. Is there a motion to adopt? The ordinance is read.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Is any discussion on the ordinance? Ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Ms. Mount?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, the ordinance passes. I'll ask the clerk to read resolution R-2308-27 by caption.
A resolution authorized a construction contract with Skyline Construction Services Incorporated to re-roof the city-owned building located at 1111 North Jefferson Street.
Okay, you've heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Last clerk to call the roll, please.
Ms. Mount?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. I'll ask the clerk to read resolution R-2308-28 by caption.
A resolution authorized a permit application with the Georgia Department of Transportation for a traffic signal located on State Route 24, US 441, North Columbia Street, at the mall driveway.
Okay, you've heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Move, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? The only, I would like to ask a question in two parts. Number one, is this going to be advertised? I hope it will be on the front page. And secondly, is it going to, I don't remember in our discussion, maybe some of you do, if it's going to blink for a certain amount of time before it's put into, I guess, you know.
You know, I, I don't, I don't remember what Corbett said about that. Part of me thinks that he said that it would, it would blink for 30 days.
Right, it would start even before they did anything with signage and, you know, letting them know that construction was, was coming up in that particular area. And then he said, once they installed the light, it would blink for over two weeks, about two weeks to 30 days. And then they would make it to get people accustomed to seeing the light there before they actually activated it.
And just remember, too, this, this, this is technically a temporary fix.
Well, if temporary until 2026 is temporary. Temporary in the scope of GOT, of DOT.
They were going to go ahead and, and, and the first thing would be the striping and, and the lanes to get people acclimated to what was going on and, and blocking. Yeah, that's going to be a biggie. It's going to be a biggie.
And I think for anybody that is not aware that the striping will create a right turn only out of businesses, and there will be turnarounds that will be incorporated periodically throughout the area. So there will be no jumping into the middle lane and taking off anymore. Or if you do, you're going to be all over the top of concrete.
Right turn only at, at the mall there, coming out of that mall.
Okay, any other discussion? Ask clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Mount?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, the resolution passes. I'll ask clerk to call, to call, call anybody you want. Ask the clerk to read resolution R-2308-29 by caption, please. I know I've got to keep it light.
A resolution authorized an agreement with G.B. Turnipseed Engineers Incorporated to provide engineering services for the replacement of the water on Wayne Street from McIntosh Street to West Walton Street. So that should be water lines. To replace the water lines on Wayne Street from McIntosh Street to West Walton Street.
Okay, you've heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion, we adopt.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is any discussion? If not, I'll ask clerk to call the roll, please.
Ms. Mount?
Aye.
Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, we don't have any alcohol license applications on the agenda for tonight, but we do have one appointment at the request of the Allied Arts Boards. The mayor is nominating Dana Wiggins Thompson to the Allied Arts Board. Is there a motion to confirm this nomination?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is any discussion? Not, I ask clerk to call the roll, please.
Ms. Mount?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Thompson is appointed to the Allied Arts Board. Do we have a need to go into closed session tonight?
Yes, sir, for a personnel issue. If you have anything legal.
Okay. Got it? All right, we need a motion.
Mayor Pretten, I make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss a personnel issue.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ask clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Mount?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, passes, and if everyone will excuse us, please. We're going into second chamber. Need a motion to adjourn.
Motion that we close the executive session and resume regular session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ask clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Mount?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, we're back in open session. Is there anyone that has any comments on council? Anything else that needs to be brought up before? This is usually when I get the "I" that needs to be brought up before.
I just want to thank Public Works for just being out there, working hard, and I know they're doing a lot of work in Carrotton Woods, and they're probably still out there right now.
Oh, I'm sure they are, yeah. Evidently, we had some straight-line winds down through there, and they took down quite a few trees all the way, and several places up and down Jefferson.
They have really been working hard.
But anyway.
And I want to thank Hank for the weather advisories.
Yes, that was good.
They help a lot.
And, and two, the fact that you're putting the agenda email, we, and you did it in detail. That was, that was really good.
And that was one of the things I was going to say, if, if with this new format, if y'all want anything more or less out of me, please let me know. But I'm, I'm excited about what this format's going to give us opportunity to do in terms of really have some public discussions. But I, I had, I've, I've been sending Dr. Lee weather reports forever, and I hate to clog up y'all's email, but if that's something that's beneficial to y'all, I'll be happy to continue to send it, especially when it's a special question like that.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm a nervous weather person, so yeah, I appreciate it.
I'm a weather nerd, of course, counting things. I was up tracking it at 2:30 this morning.
I was too, but with one eye.
That's right.
Any others?
Move, we adjourn.
Second.
Third.
Fourth.
All right, we are adjourned.